Hey, choice. Okay, alright, thank you. Can I start right at six thirty window? Yes. The meeting will please come to order. Hello, everyone. My name is Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. Today is Thursday, September the second. I want to thank everyone who was joining us virtually and those who are in council chambers. Just as a reminder, for anyone who would like on public comment, virtually, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat. And public comment will take place after non legislative business. At this time, we will have opening prayer by Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harms way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Please call the role.
Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Fields.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field.
Present.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Present.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Present.
Councilman Spadola.
Present.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
One more time, Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver. Okay, I see her and it sounds like she's having mic issue. So she is to be noted, present, council, uh, president.
Okay, thank you.
President Congo.
Here.
While present and one accent.
Now, Mary Bell, can you hear me?
Yes, I got you noted, Councilwoman Oliver. Thank you.
That's right. I was having some auto problems. I'm sorry.
You're fine. Thank you.
Meeting of the minutes of the previous meeting.
August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, City Council met on virtual regular session above date at six thirty PM. President Ernest M. Congo, the second presiding. The opening prayer was done by Akira Granado, Deputy City Clerk. The Pledge of Allegiance was recited by City Council.
I move that the meet, uh, the meeting minutes be received.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the minutes be accepted as written. On the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we'll have the City Treasuries Report.
September second, twenty-twenty-one, total investment, five hundred fourteen million, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars and ten cents. Total cash on hand, twelve million, seven hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred eighteen dollars and twelve cents. Grand total, five hundred and twenty-six million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, twenty-two cents submitted by Dwayne Sims, City Treasurer.
I move the Treasurers Report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the Treasurers Report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. This time, I'll accept, motion to accept all non legislative business.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept all non legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Do any council members have any presentations this evening? If not, I would like to recognize a sympathy, sympathy resolution from Councilwoman Oliver for Elizabeth Black. Also, a re-
He reads, he likes reading.
Also a recognition, uh, resolution from Councilman Spadola for Karen George. And a resolution of recognition for Marie Farrier from Councilwoman Walsh. On behalf of all of council, we would like to keep the family of Robert Bucciini in our, in our prayers. His father, Donato, Robert Bucciini, passed away. And I just want to make sure no council members have any presentations.
Council President, you, uh, you handled mine. I appreciate it. Just wanted to acknowledge Karen George, retiring, uh, United States Postal Service worker who's, uh, worked in Triangle neighborhood for thirty years. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you, Councilman.
Excuse me.
Also, also, um, sympathy resolution sponsored by Councilwoman Fields for Buster Snow Junior.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mister, uh, Mister President.
Yes, Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes, um, I'd just, um, like to make sure you say that was Robert Tini Senior, because, I mean, when I said that, somebody was thinking it was junior, so I just wanted for you to clear that up.
Yes, thank you. Yes, it's his father.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this time, just want to see if anyone has signed up virtually for public comment. Alright, we do have uh, two speakers in council chambers. Two visitors, and what they believe have one, one speaker for, uh, for public comment. Again, just as a friendly reminder, there is, there is still the, uh, the Google signup link in the chat for anyone who would like to speak virtually. The time limit is three minutes. And once you get to around a minute forty-five seconds left, I will give you a friendly reminder. So at this time, I'm gonna, um, ask for Ms. Savage to come forward. You come up to my left, please. Just make sure you adjust the mic, please. Yes, thank you. On WIT, I just want to do a mic check for the public comment microphone, please. Can you keep speaking into it, please?
Excuse me, have, um, can somebody turn the mic on at the podium, please?
Thank you.
Hello, hello, okay.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Uh, I just want to say it's my first city council meeting, and that's, that's all. I didn't know that, um, I could say something, so I thought, why not?
Okay.
Um, just say hello.
Alright, well, thank you. Thank you for, uh, joining us. Look forward to coming back. Alright, at this time, we are going to go to legislative business. Councilmember Gray.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver.
Nothing this, um, evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Harley.
No legislation tonight, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Fields.
I think tonight, Mr. President.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes, yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance to present and call for the person, second reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero forty-five, Agenda zero zero nine one, in order to amend chapter forty of the city code to change the observance of Veterans Day as a paid holiday for eligible city employees to, to the eleventh day of November.
First reading of the ordinance.
In ordinance to amend chapter forty of the city code to change the observance of Veterans Day as a paid holiday for eligible city employees to the eleventh day of November.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance, uh, referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Thank you.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Field.
Mr. President.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Dixon.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Councilmember Spadola.
Uh, nothing tonight.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present.
Ordinance twenty-one zero forty-six, Agenda zero zero nine-two, in ordinance to amend chapter forty of the city code to eliminate bumping rates for non-union employees in the classified service.
First reading of the ordinance.
In ordinance to amend chapter forty of the city code to eliminate bumping rates for non-union employees in the classified service.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I made that be known as the first and second reading of that ordinance and referred to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. At this time, we will go to petitions and communication. I'm going to go first this evening, followed by my colleagues. I just want to, uh, just thank all of the, uh, the first responders and the community at large for coming to the, uh, to the aid and to the rescue of many of our citizens here in our city. As many of you know, there was terrible flooding in certain sections of Wilmington. Uh, people's houses and they were flooded and then cars were, uh, destroyed and a lot of cars were under, underwater. And right now, the state and the city are in the process of converting the Powell Center into a shelter. And roughly fifty people have, have, uh, short, have sought shelter. Over one hun- hundred people have been seen at the reception center and COVID screening is available on site. There were several power outages, but many of them were short term. Most of the city's power has been restored. If a wire comes down, uh, please call nine-one-one to report it, and please do not go near any downed wires. Please call nine-one-one for all emergencies. It's gonna take some time to recover from this aftermath from Hurricane Ida, but we can, we can make it through this together. And both the Wilmington Police Department and the Wilmington Fire Department have been rescuing people and their pets throughout the day. Over one hundred people have been rescued. So again, I want to thank all of our first responders. And again, just people in the community who saw where people needed help and, and came to their aid. Uh, the city's Emergency Operations Center was fully functional. They have opened throughout the day to assist all of our first responders. And tomorrow, the city's of, the city's Office of Emergency Management and the Delaware Emergency Management Agency will be on site to do a damage assessment and debris management. This damage was a result of a high tide from hurricane, from he- from the hurricane and a runoff from Pennsylvania. And I just, again, I just want to encourage all of my, my, uh, my colleagues and everyone who lives in Wilmington, everyone who lives in, in the surrounding area, just to continue to lend a hand, lend a hand. I know tomorrow, uh, tomorrow and Saturday, and Saturday, there's going to be a donation, a den- donation, uh, set up site at our funeral home on twenty-fourth and Market Street. So anyone who would like to donate any clothes, any household items, there will be, people there who are volunteered to accept donations from ten AM until both Friday and Saturday. Again, that address is twenty-three seventeen North Market Street. Again, I just want to thank, uh, the community for putting this together. And, and for thinking of it, and at this, and that's what's gonna take us through this. Um, it's not, our, our first responders aren't going to be able to handle the load. Elected officials, we can't do, do it all. It's really gonna be a community-based project. And I'm just, I just, just so thankful that the community has already begun to respond. Again, twenty-three seventeen North Market Street, anytime tomorrow and Saturday from ten AM until you'll be able to drop off donations. Uh, any clothing, any household, household items. They don't really want to deal with any, any monies, but anything that you are able to, to donate, please go there tomorrow between, uh, ten AM until on Friday and Saturday. And I will, um, this time, we will go to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yes, it was devastating in our city yesterday. And I along with you do, uh, thank all of our emergency responders for the outstanding job that, that was done. We never think it's going to happen to us. Ironically, a former council member's house was, uh, pretty much destroyed over on the east side, um, over on Eleventh Street. Please, if you see your neighbor needing help, just reach out to them. My people also said that there is no trash collection. This is a holiday weekend on top of everything else. So there, uh, the city of Wilmington is closed on Monday. Um, there is no trash collection. I have a couple of other things that I'm going to leave alone for tonight. Um, I think it's important that we stay unified in this city whenever we're facing a crisis. And I believe that what we face from the devastation from this storm can be categorized as a crisis. So that's all I have to say, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Did you want to go to, uh, Councilman Spadola first? Let's see, is that the Councilwoman Walsh? I just wanted to-
Okay, sure. Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Spadola.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just want to echo your sentiments and, uh, Councilmember Walsh's. I think it's amazing. And, uh, so thankful that there were, knock on wood, no reports of injuries or deaths right now in Wilmington. Uh, without a doubt, uh, we owe a debt of gratitude to our, uh, you know, police officers and firefighters who undoubtedly, uh, helped prevent injuries or, or deaths so far. Um, so I, you know, I think, uh, everybody keep their phones on as much as you can. Anybody, uh, who needs assistance, please do reach out. Um, the devastation did look, uh, pretty bad on the east side. So hopefully, uh, we can get through this and hopefully the people that are displaced will soon, soon be back in their, um, soon find a warm bed. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I would also like to recognize Councilwoman Darby at this time. Uh, Councilmember Dixon.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I also just wanted to, um, echo the comments that have already been made. Um, but again, to thank our first responders and emergency teams for, um, all the work that they've been doing, will continue to do, um, to help with the aftermath of Ida. Um, and I think, you know, for all of us, uh, the city hasn't been hit in this capacity before, um, but we are a resilient city. Um, and I know we'll get through it if we're doing it together. So, um, again, if you're, there's a lot of community members who are trying to come out and support, um, each other, which is fantastic, and, and trying to collect as much as possible. Um, just continue to reach out and, and donate as much as possible, uh, to make sure that we, make sure that Wilmington is safe. So please stay safe, everyone. Um, as well as, um, still watch out for all the flooding. Don't go to war floods, uh, floodplain areas, uh, so that you don't get stuck, um, in the space. So please just be, uh, safe and, um, stay within your homes if you're in one of those floodplain areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Field.
Nothing else to add tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Uh, yes, the, uh, announcement I have is that the, uh, this upcoming Tuesday, September seventh at five PM is the Finance Committee Meeting. Um, it is a pretty packed agenda as we are, um, this first meeting back from summer break, so, uh, please come and, uh, there's, uh, gonna be interesting discussion. Um, especially involving the American Rescue Plan Fund, so, uh, please stay tuned and I, I hope to see you Tuesday.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd just also like to echo, you know, thank you to all the first responders. Um, luckily, I have not had many people reaching out to me on that note, but I had people who actually reached out to find out if they can be a resource. Uh, so for those who actually have the means to give, you know, I pointed them in, uh, you know, the, the direction that the, uh, the city Wilmington, in the case to where they were actually providing resources, the Powell and the Hicks Center. So just want to say thank you for reaching out because you have the heart to give to your, your neighbors. Um, also just wanted to, I wanted to make you aware, we actually were supposed to be having like a little community day tomorrow. So, um, it's still gonna be sunny outside. We may not get a chance to do everything if it's still too muddy, but you can always grab a hot dog or hamburger. So please come out to Kushusco Park tomorrow because we love to be able to, um, to check in with our neighbors. So it'll be tomorrow at four PM. It'll be just there from four to seven. I hope to get a chance to see that.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, um, thank you, um, Councilwoman McCoy for, um, saying William Hicks. Um, Council President, you did mention the Powell, but I did, um, also want to mention, um, William Hicks is another place that's receiving those who, um, who are being displaced from their homes as well. Um, so, um, please reach out to that and also, um, they should be calling, you know, residents should be reminded to call nine-one-one. If they have any questions, they can also call three-one-one through the city of Wilmington. Um, I would like to remind everyone on nine eleven at Helen Chambers Park, which is a Sixth Street Park, there will be a community and, uh, Community Empowerment Fest given by, um, Pastor D M A J Harding. Um, it's, it's a, it's a fest to empower the community to, um, you know, just get together, um, right here in Westerner City. Um, when, um, that's on a Saturday, then that Sunday is a Hispanic, um, Hispanic festival and parade. Um, me and, uh, Councilwoman Cabrera will be hosting. So this is something new for me. So I want everybody to come out, come and, um, enjoy the parade as well. We have some good things coming through the fifth district. Um, and you know, my, um, my, my, my last sentiments are, um, you know, we, we have to be thankful for our police. We have to be thankful for our firemen. Uh, we have to be thankful for our EMTs as well. Um, and I know that, um, our, I know that our city council, along with the administration and, um, in our state, we, we are all gathered together to make sure that our community and our residents are taken care of. So, um, I just applaud all of us for, um, just taking charge and, um, digging in and, and getting out there and just, uh, providing information as well as, you know, um, steering people in the right direction. As far as, you know, where they can, where they can lend a hand. So, you know, I've, I've had those calls where people want to donate, um, you know, um, uh, you know, um, gifts and, and clothing and sanitizing and different things like that. So we are a city of one. We are a council of one, so, um, I, I definitely applaud that. And you know me, I have my quotes. So, um, my quote is, hate is called, hate, it, it has caused a lot of problems in this world, but it is not solved, but it has not solved one yet. Maya Angelou. I'm just asking that we all continue to pray for, pray for our, our city, our city council, our state, our government, and our residents. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harley.
Uh, yes, I, Mr. President, um, I too wanted to thank everyone, um, for, uh, putting their hands to the plow and to the wheel as it relates to, um, the historical event that we had on, um, yesterday. There's a saying that many hands make light work, and it sounds like to me that many hands are putting their hands to the plow, um, to make it easier for those that have been impacted by this flood. Um, my announcement that I want to make is to remind, um, those especially that live around the Bancroft School. Um, my announcement that I want to make is to remind, um, those especially that live around the Van Croft School over on Eighth and Lombard, that there is going to be a meeting on this Tuesday, September the seventh, from six to seven. Um, the actual meeting is also going to be, um, at Drew Pile on Sixth, um, in Lombard. So it's about Van Croft, but it's going to be held at Sixth and Lombard on this Tuesday, September the seventh, from six to seven. There are a number of people that have been, um, stating that they didn't know what was going on with Van Croft. I announced it last week and I'm announcing it tonight. Um, for those that want to know what's going on, they want to know about the project updates. Um, they are going to offer a project walking tour on Tuesday, September the seventh, from six to seventh, on Sixth and Lombard. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I too would like to, um, share, um, that donations are being taken, uh, at William Hicks Anderson Center and the PAL Center. And there are families that are William Hicks Anderson and at the PAL Center, they're giving out vouchers and also, uh, American Red Cross is there to assist with, um, shelter. Uh, and I think they have some counselors to talk to them also. And I would like to thank our first responders, M E T, M E T. And, uh, I know I was in contact with Willie Patrick most, most of the day, so I'd like to give him kudos for the outstanding job that his whole team, um, emergency management has done today. Um, also, um, I would like to thank, uh, State Representative Stephanie Bowden. Uh, when I went out there, she was out there and I received a lot of calls. She was out there directing traffic today, uh, with the police officers on Governor Prince. The third district was really hit hard with the flooding over Eleventh Street Bridge, four ninety-five, uh, um, and, and Old Brandywine Village. Um, also, I would like to thank everyone who came out to August Courtly, which was a very success even due to the pandemic that tried to hinder it. It was very successful. Um, and, uh, that's all I have to say, uh, Mr. President. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Darby.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I want to, um, give out my same sentiments. Um, today has been a hectic, crazy day for a woman. And there's our community has come together to really work together to-
Councilwoman Darby, your audio is going in and out.
Do you hear me better now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you now.
Yeah, so, um, I'm in contact with someone at the PALS and William Hicks Center to donate diapers. But if you know of any other families in need of diapers, please contact me. You can contact me at the City Council Office. You can email me, S N Darby at Wilmington D E dot gov. I have plenty of diapers to give to families in need. Um, right now, we have some wipes, um, and also have a network, um, who may have formula and baby clothes for families in need. Um, so there are plenty of ways to reach out to me, call City Council Office or shoot me an email. Um, but we're out, um, delivering diapers directly to families. So just contact me and we'll get that done for you. That's all I have for tonight, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you, Council President. Well, since I'm last, I think everyone has said just about everything. I also thank our first responders for everything that they've done. And we've mentioned that PAL Center is a refuge. They have vouchers, they have counselors. So please reach out to the PAL Center or reach out to me if there's any need. And I compliment everyone in Wilmington who's coming together to help us overcome this disaster. And if you have things to donate, as our president said, um, they're collecting from ten AM on. And, um, just reach out, help everyone, and be safe. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that all council members can be reached at our City Council Office at three zero two five seven six two one four zero. Again, our number is five seven six twenty-one forty. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I move.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you for joining us, everyone.
Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Everybody have a good weekend.